Here. I thank you very much for your time and our meeting is open as well.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to go ahead Chuck, do you want to start it?
Chuck Wise.
Is Ray Kelly. What do you have?
Mike Bane.
Sandra Kidman.
Bryce Anderson.
Bryce Jones. All right, thank you. First, um, item is related to the Page High School pool renovation and presentation of the City of Page. It's a pretty narrow topic. So if we go off the rails, I would appreciate, and I put myself in that, I would appreciate a call to order by saying point of order. Now, turn the time over to Coach Anderson.
I want to share a little background related to the pool, but before I do that, I did want to afford Councilman Kerry the opportunity to share some thoughts.
Thank you, Superintendent. My thanks to P S D Superintendent Anderson, our city manager Caldwell, and especially the focus group that Darren has been meeting with over the past year. Thanks for your efforts. Think there's a lot of interest in an aquatic facility, and I think momentum has built to the point where we can have this important meeting and figure out what is the right path forward. Last February, we did this at city council, city manager made some presentations. To be honest, there was lukewarm response from council members who basically said, go back and think some more and go talk to some more people. One of that options was to fully explore the partnership with the Page Unified School District. And I do thank Councilman Farrell for also being a catalyst in some of those discussions. I think the discussions have matured. It's time to come up with a facility that makes sense for Page, that's fiscally responsible, and that can be sustainable in terms of operation and maintenance over the years. I don't have a third option. I know some things I like. I know it's going to be a compromise. We can't let perfect be the enemy of the good, as the saying goes. Let's get what we can. But I do like what I'm hearing, and I think it's a good time to hear in public and decide which way we're going. Even if it turns out to be at separate efforts, not for a pool, but but a location on campus is better suited for this than a location on city or soon to be city property is better for this. I'm okay with that. I think we should have a part ways, understanding that we fleshed it out and we've agreed jointly to move forward. And let's not have any confusions. Let's all move in the right direction. Perfect. So appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Assistant Chairman, members of the founding board, Page City Council, I just want to share my appreciation for the leadership at the City of Page. I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Caldwell, and had the opportunity to meet with Councilman Farrell, Board Member Mangum, to really take a look at the existing structure that is currently in place. And I just want to give a little historical perspective. The pool located on Page High School campus was built in 1979. It was closed eight years ago because of significant issues with the facility, not just the pool and the ground, but the structure of the facility itself. Structural engineers came in, did a complete evaluation, and there is considerable work that needs to go into bringing that back up to a standard. One of the points made by the structural engineer that came in to do that is that structure was never built to support a humid environment. The steel structure wasn't, just isn't able to sustain long term. I know that we have talked at length about different options, you know, and the millions of dollars that it would take to bring a pool back to that facility, and still, we don't take care of the the structure is still the structure. We're still going to have those types of ongoing issues. The other piece that is a concern is while Mr. Caldwell and I have a very good working relationship, he and I are not going to be in our positions forever, and the district cannot take on the sole responsibility for the maintenance upkeep and operation of a swimming pool on its own. The ballpark pricing that we have been getting for the annual maintenance and operation is somewhere around $700,000 a year. So with that, I just wanted to provide a little perspective. I wanted to thank Mr. Caldwell for the meaningful conversations and the effort to really come together, and I think that we will have an opportunity to come together around the proposal that I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Caldwell to provide.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I, everything that Dr. Anderson has mentioned there, I want to agree with. We have been working behind the scenes. Oftentimes, you don't see a lot of what we do. But we have been, especially for the last year since I got directed for council, to go look at a pool. Initially, of course, when we started looking at the pool and the pool committee was created, bigger's better, right? So last year, when I did my presentation, it came up around $43,000, $43 million. The City of Page can only borrow 25 million. So by no means do we want to hit that mark in case we have emergency and we have to do some emergency bonding. We have to be able to do that as well. So we want to stay around, you know, the 10 to 15 million dollar range. Needless to say, that doesn't get us an indoor pool right now. But what we can do is we can build the facility ready to do an indoor pool. So if we decide to add on, once this bond is paid for in 15 years or sooner, we can, once again, reevaluate, do we want to do an indoor pool? So what I'm going to show you tonight is short and simple because I know that the board, I want to thank all of you for coming, and council too, two meetings in a row, but I know that you have a board meeting after this, so my presentation is pretty, pretty short. First of all, I want to show you a few different, which button do I push here?
The one, Eric, they hold.
Darren, before you get started, and I was probably a miss, I should have read the, the item before. For our record, I have to, I have to disclose the item that we're discussing. And that is discussion of possible action by the city council and the Page Unified School District pertaining to possible mutual agreement for public swimming pool. Thank you.
You bet. So in your packs that you have there, these first slides are basically just a few different pool architecture groups that are well-known in Arizona, you might say. So when we start this whole process, we'll have to kind of decide on which one we want to go with. But these are, the first one was J2 or H2O. This one's Hiddle. And you can see, most of these are what you're going to have, is you're going to have different portions. So this one on the bottom left, that's like a young adult with the the different slides going into a deeper area, and then it migrates to a smaller children's area, a play pool. And then you get into, this one has a diving board, if we ever wanted to do competitive diving, as well as then a lap pool. So if the school district ever decides to get a swimming team once again, that would be available. It would also be available for adults, for open swimming, that kind of thing. We would, you know, create certain times. This also has changing rooms, bathrooms, storage, and then, of course, the pump rooms and everything that goes along with that. This one is the same kind of thing, just set up different with the kids' pool being beside the lap pool. You're actually going to see a picture of this one, because this one is set up that those are garage doors in the very front of the kids' area. So that if it's cooler, or we wanted to keep that open potentially through the winter, we can shut the garage doors and keep that open. Now, the lap pool would have to be drained on, on all of these. So we're probably looking at from May to sometime in October. Everything that I've heard and everything that I've talked to as far as different city managers, basically, once the high school kids get in school again and the college kids leave, you don't have any swimming instructors or lifeguards. So most of the smaller communities have to close no matter what because they lose their lifeguards. Once again, same kind of setup. This one is a little more warranted towards kids. This is where the pool committee has been really productive, trying to figure out what is the best use for our money. There's about eight people on there that have been fantastic to work with. This is the one I was talking about. So you can see there that the inside play area is hooked to the lap pool. So we can open those doors and that can be viewed on as well. So if you've got kids in both areas, you have an opportunity to keep an eye. You can watch the little rug rats as well as the teenagers. Okay, here's some, these are some cost estimates that I received from from a crew in the valley that this is what they do, is they build pools. Now, some of these, I'll, I'll give you the dates and I'll give you the, the amounts. This one has a children's play area as well as the lap pool, and it's got a lazy river. In 2008, it was nine million bucks. So you're looking at what, 15 years more, and you're talking, doing business in Page, which is normally what, 30% higher normally? Here's another one. This was 2007. This doesn't, isn't quite as elaborate as the last one. It was 4.5 million. This one, 2014, once again, just a lap pool and basically a splash pad. That one was 3.1 million. So there's two different options that we can do this as far as the city. Compared to the school district, they don't have the opportunity to tax. We do through either property tax or sales tax. Basically, what an obligation bond is, is we go up to vote to all the residents in Page, the people are registered to vote, to put the pool on your property tax. Probably not the best route because, you know, we do have quite a few senior citizens now in Page, and, you know, are they going to have the concept? Since, since I'm not going to use it, I'm not going to vote for it, which isn't uncommon. You can ask Bryce about school bonds or anything. They're just really, really tough to get past. The next one is what's called a revenue bond. So this is a limited revenue stream that we commit directly to the pool and the operation of the pool. And we can do that, the council can do that just by the raise of their hand. And they can do that through an increase in a tax. So my idea is there's two different ways we can do this. There's 444, which are hotels. That's your common bed tax that you, that you hear about. The next one is 447, and that is basically the rentals in town and the short-term rentals. Anything less than 29 days is taxed under this. So this is hard to read. I'm going to get to my page. I had this due by, it's called the League of Cities, that basically we, we turn to for everything. Currently, the City of Page on their hotel tax has a 3% tax. If we were to increase that to 5%, so an additional 2%, an additional $2 on 100. That would raise $1,285,000. Whoops, sorry, got to hit myself. On the, the transient tax, if we were to go up, basically 0.7%, that would raise $460,000. There's our operating costs. Bryce had came in at about $700,000 for his indoor pool. An outdoor pool is, is less because it's not open all the time. You don't have to worry about all the ventilation that you do with the indoor pool. So combined there, we're at nearly $1.7 million, and the citizens aren't paying for any of it. It's all the 5.3 million visitors that come to town are going to help us build our pool. So this is a 15-year bond at 4 and 1/4% on $15 million. Now, how a bond works is, say the council wants to do bonding for $15 million. Think of that basically as a line of credit. So we, we spend a million dollars, we take out a million dollars. If you guys bond for 15 million and we spend 12, that's how much we get obligated for. Just because we're going to raise our hand on 15, you know, we, we don't have to spend that, depending on what the architects do and, and the construction people. This, this goes out all the way, but let me bring this one back up. Our payments on that are $1,372,000 for 15 years. We have excess, you know. I haven't read the numbers yet or forecast, but, I mean, can we have that paid off in 10 years? If our, if we continue to grow in hotel rooms, my numbers are going to increase. So, but what I'm trying to say is, city council, we can afford it. I think if we go this route, we can afford it. Now, Bryce and I have been talking, and we have been talking about an IGA, an MOU, something like that, because we want to make sure that the school's involved in this and they have the opportunity to use the facilities. So in one nice thing, this doesn't affect you, but it does affect our council. It doesn't affect our spending on it. It's a bond. It's a debt. So that one three, it doesn't, it's not going to move our needle. The city only has so much money we can spend. And what's happening is we're growing and we're bringing in more money, and we want to do more things, but the state says we can't spend our money that we have. So we, we have to keep an eye on it. We went over one year when we did playground equipment. We, you know, did some improvements to the baseball fields and stuff. This won't be effective at all.
We did $4 million of paying for power on the open market.
Yes, that's what it's over. We had to cover the P E week, so I wasn't going to say that, counselor.
Well, I mean, it's just, just remember, it wasn't anybody's fault. It was just the situation.
Yeah, it was. So here's my idea with working with the school district. We, we know the school district is going to be strapped for money. It's always going to be strapped for money. That's the way school districts are. My, my dad was elementary principal for 25 years. So my idea is this becomes our facility. And we put it on our property down around the baseball field where we're putting new splash pad. We're, we're creating, we're, we're creating a sports facility in town. When the school district wants to use it, say they, they get a swimming club for 120 days, the school district pays for the maintenance. We set up a, an agreement that if we run into, like we did this last year with power, where power went up 40%, we adjust at year end and school district pays 30%, city of Page pays 70. Something that we can come up that's agreeable. This way, the headaches, not the school district. Bryce won't have this, this albatross around his neck going into eternity. The reason they closed it before, I think, was because they, they didn't have the money to maintain it. With this being an outside facility, it really lessens the maintenance. Because as Bryce can tell you, when he's been costing out what it costs just for ventilation on an indoor pool, because you've got to keep that condensation out of there all the time. You see those ones that are beaded and there's cracks? That's what happens. So in a nutshell, basically, my belief is that the city can proceed. That basically, if you direct me, this can be on the next city council for further discussion. Dr. Anderson and I, once we get to a point, we can start sitting down. I think we can knock out an IGA real quick. That's the show. Any questions? Yes.
So in looking at this and financing a pool and these different options, we're looking at 10 to 15 million dollars a year, that, that
No, no, one time.
No, excuse me, 10 to 15 million overall.
Right.
But in order to pay that down, that's approximately 1.3 million roughly.
Right.
Up or down a little bit. One thing that's concerning for me is, is we've got that figured into how we might be able to do that through taxes and stuff and raising that money. That still leaves approximately, based on Bryce's figures, $700,000 a year of maintenance.
That was his indoor pool. Mine doesn't need all that. Cities doesn't need.
Do we have some numbers on what that is? Because that's the part that needs to be sustainable also.
Yes. I even talked to Drew. He has an outdoor pool right now, and his payment runs about $180,000 a year for maintenance, not including employees and that kind of stuff. But power bills, that kind of thing. I'm figuring up here with what we have in excess, we're going to have over $400,000 in excess if we do it this way. You know, and when we're done paying for this, there's, I mean, you don't have to discontinue it. You can do another project. This, this can be like a recreation fund that the city just continues to contribute. And we, we, we pick large capital projects. Maybe it'll get paid off early in 10 years, and then we, we look at going indoors, you know, or is that ever the smartest move? I don't know. But maybe we look at other large improvements for the community. After doing this, I was really concerned after the first presentation, and we had those large numbers, and those were all indoor pools. Going outdoors saves the time.
So how many employees are you figuring you have to have, and just for that timeframe, you're going to close the pool from September 1st through April 1st? Is that what you're
Yeah, something like that, I think, yeah. Depending on our weather. Like I said, and everybody has said too, once the kids back, get back in school, it doesn't get used.
Well, don't you have, you're going to have open to the public where they can purchase a, a ticket where they can come in to open, open swim and different things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we'll do a, a block of time, but still, once the kids get back in school and the, and the college kids are gone, it, it almost comes to a halt. You know, you do a couple hours of open swimming for, for adults.
Even Phoenix closes their pools.
Yeah.
And they could, they could keep them open year round, but they close theirs during the school year also.
I'm just curious, you know, the pros and cons between the difference, but the, if you had an indoor pool, because I, you know, in Flagstaff, they have what that aquatic
Right.
They're what's just year round. And just thinking, you know, if next year we're going into a four-day, you know, the kids will have the opportunity to go swimming year round. And I don't know if, if you're going to generate funds year round or if summer's, or if it's seasonal, and what difference is in that?
And everybody, I mean, basically, a pool, you can look at it like a city park. It, it doesn't make money. Normally, the highest anybody did with seasonal passes and dated passes and stuff, they hit the 40% mark. That was the highest of anybody. And the newer the pool, the more expensive it would be, you know, to make that balance because you have that debt. And the problem is too with an indoor pool, the max we can borrow is 25 million. And I would never recommend to council to exhaust their, their borrowing power. Just, I mean, just for common sense, if something drastic happens and we have to come up with something, you know. There is, I mean, I'd rather not do the pool than exhaust our, our borrowing power.
You mentioned 128 years for the school district?
Well, that's a shot in the dark. I don't know how long they started practicing beforehand. I was talking about a swim team. So and then I figured about, I don't know, two and a half months to three months of actual competition, like basketball does and
And, and I'm thinking more of making it part of our physical education curriculum.
Right, which is fine.
From Lakeview, Desert View, middle school, high school, an opportunity to cycle over to the school partner. So that would all be worked out in the details of the IGA.
You would have to like August and September, which are the, the nicest time of year.
So basically, we basically get two months in the first start of school and maybe a month, so two months in the
No, I'm not saying that at all. We can work that out.
I'm just saying with, with the way school rolled, the school calendar rolls.
Oh, right.
You know what I mean? We, we only really truly, we get those two months pre and post.
Those would be solid. I think we could go into October.
Right.
Can I also
For the heartier grave.
I'm sorry, but can I also mention that we do have summer school programs as well too, that would be beneficial to our students?
Absolutely, that's perfect. Now we need to find lifeguards.
Train them.
Yeah.
Only high school kids. So in terms of this question that has been looming, are we going to locate that on the school property or not? What's the board's feeling and stuff? Harrison, you're feeling I'm moving forward. Are you better with a scenario that has city ownership of facility and your partnership is through someone you mentioned to use that facility?
That is my preference.
And originally, when we started discussing this, Dr. Anderson and I, he was apprehensive because he was already going on another track to, to create a recreation opportunity for, for students. And so a lot of that engineering and architecture is already in progress, so that all came to a halt. So this is the best of both worlds. Even if you had it on your property, you could still probably only use it that amount of time.
You had to go in first.
Okay, thank you. I just want to go back again, Bryce. I'm sorry. I, I want to know, follow on to Councilman Kerry's question. In your opinion, and your board's opinion, the way the existing pool setup is now, the numbers don't make sense, or what you're saying is to look at the space, what needs to be done to dig out the old and put in the new. It doesn't make sense from our earlier conversations.
A significant piece, the district doesn't have the ability to generate revenue. We've got to work within our means. So we have what we have, and in order to fund something like a pool, we have to get something up to make that happen. So this partnership is, is perfect for the school district because it allows us to create an IGA that makes sense for both the city and for the school district, that affords our students an opportunity to, to utilize that resource and ultimately not be weighed down by the prospect of the partnership between the city and, and the district. At some point in the future, disintegrating and having to take the full burden of operation on ourselves.
And I'll let, I'll, I'll let the founding board and the city council know, this idea came from Mesa. This is exactly what they do. And they say it works fantastic, and it's an outdoor pool.
The, the second part of that question, because I'm for a full-year pool, not a part-time pool. Because as a former competitive swimmer, water pole player, I was in the water all year long. And it's not just a 120 day or some number. You can't make competitive swimmer competitive part-time. So I just want to go back one more time. I'm sorry, because we, we had good conversations. I just want to make clear that even if the, it isn't an issue, if it's a funding issue, a partnership that would help, if the numbers were correct, back to Brian Kerry's comment, is it best here or where we're talking, in your opinion, or down at the sports complex? What is best for, in your opinion, for the students? I just want to make sure. I, I put you on the spot. I'm sorry.
Yes, you certainly are. From, from my vantage point, in looking at the existing facility, and, and I, I did take some pictures, if you'd like to, to see the existing facility, the engineering report. You look at the steel structure within that building, that whole roof pan ends up, it, it needs to be, when it rains, it rains into the building. You know, we, I know that we had talked this a long time ago, and, and we have some serious work that needs to be done to make sure that our buildings are brought up to spec and a standard. And the SFB School Facilities Board, which funds the projects related to our And the SFB School Facilities Board, which funds the projects related to our, our facilities, a decision was made to turn the pool into a multi-use facility, simply because of the cost of operation.
Okay, well, thank, and I appreciate it, sir. I just wanted to make sure, because it's, it's been a question, not just in these rooms, but out in the public. Why can't we do this? And we're doing it because there's leak issues, structural issues, danger issues.
Pool issues.
Says, yeah, pool issues, but, you know, for the safety of the people that are gonna go around to and from, it just wouldn't work.
And, and my hope would be that the city does look at eventually providing a, because your, your, your comment is not lost on me. Having a year-round facility would be perfect, but I think having a facility to start with is our, our best first step. And I think if it's designed with the ability to enclose and make it a year-round facility at some point in the future, that's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. And if we did, if we get hit off, you know, we do it sooner, that's why we keep that fund going. Right. And I say we start that titty as soon as we can. Yes?
I hope that out of this, we, we come to the conclusion, this is the third time that I've had discussions about reopening the existing pool. I've had these conversations twice with Jim Walker about the pool. And it was determined back in those days, both times, that it was not economically feasible to use that building. I hope that we, we get beyond that, because sometimes the process of government moves is so slow, I'd hate to come back in here and have the same discussion for a fourth time next year or the year after. So, because it, all it does is bring us back to square one again. Hopefully, we're moving on to square two, three, four, and a swimming pool. Because those, those are facts. Matter of fact, I talked Jim Walker after it was closed into temporarily opening it. And we lasted about three weeks when it just became obvious that we were not gonna be able to keep water in that pool without spending a whole lot of money. So, I hope that we memorialize our, our memories and what we've decided to do and why. And that's, it's, it boils down to economics.
At the risk of sounding like my father-in-law, I don't mean to be the booger in the lip pile.
Nope.
But it's my understanding that many years ago, the city took on the project of building a cultural arts building so that for this, for the city and also so the school could use it for, you know, many different situations. And it has been used. And then the city, for some reason, left, gave it to the school district. School district could not afford to keep it going, market needs to be going, and has just lived along, missed a lot of opportunities during the years and such. And so, my concern is, okay, in this partnership, what's the assurance that the same things have been happening?
Well, this won't really, I mean, it's gonna be the city's pool. And the city will run.
The cultural arts building with the cities.
I think she's going with, like, in that IGA, IGA agreement, what, what would be, would there be an opportunity for a long-term commitment?
Sure.
You know what I mean? I think it's kinda where she's headed.
Well, it'll be on our property. So, I can't force you to take our property yet. I'm assuming the C A B was built on your property.
It was built before I came, but that was my understanding. It was the city's, you know, project, and then the city left and traded over. Did you know Mayor Dyak?
I asked like this story.
This is a rattle.
We gotta stay on the pool topic.
Okay, yeah.
We can't discuss why or when the C A B does that. If you wanna discuss that, we gotta have another meeting.
Absolutely.
So my question is, you mentioned there are eight folks that are on this pool committee. May I ask who they are?
I can tell you a couple.
How many adults, how many students? I mean, I'd like to know.
It does not have any students.
No children?
No, but we have some from our, our student board now that we definitely could bring in when we start the, the actual planning. Because we're just basically doing back-to-back and stuff, you know, right now.
The reason why I ask, because, I mean, this is a community.
Yes.
Opportunity, but we need it also to be inclusive of all ages and in our community. And I say our community, because I don't live in Page, but I live out in Coppermine.
Yeah.
And Page is basically where we go to shop in.
Sure.
Attend school, work, whatever it may be. But the other question that I also have for you is a survey. Has the survey been done that is inclusive to all, all folks in the community and within the school to give, get a better insight? Just a survey to see what folks would think would be good for, for the pool, just out of curiosity.
Right.
Because I, or the reason why I say that is because I know there is a young lady that attends school here who travels to Canav to be on the swim team.
Oh, yeah.
Consistently, and that's like a routine for this young lady. But the other thing is knowing that we do have Lake Powell, and we also have, you know, recreational opportunities here as well too. One of the big things is that I see, should we even talk about it, but the commitments, but also reality is that I think we really need to consider what's, what is also in the best interest of the school as well too. And you had several plans that you showed.
Mm-hmm.
And then within those plans, that's basically the plans for the previous or what is currently the pool, right, Jim, here? Or the pool?
No, these, these, these are, they were from different architects in the valley that do pools. And so I just asked them to send me some stuff that they had done before.
Okay.
So, yeah, we would have to, we, we'd have to go through the whole procurement process in order to, to do that stuff. But I'm not opposed. I don't, you know, that's why we created the, the committee from the community. I, I really don't think that we need to do a survey. I think we have heard enough from, from people on what they want, but I am not opposed at all of bringing in young people to help. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and the, I think that if there was folks that wanted to serve, and I know we've announced it several times, that city council may use anybody with an interest to let the city manager know. So I'm, I'm not, I can't give you permission to speak, I'm sorry, I'm not chair.
Sorry, we don't take audience input, I'm sorry.
Debbie?
Okay.
If you wanna ask me a question afterwards?
Yeah, it's just, many of us have asked to be on the committee, and no one ever calls us, and we've asked it again, and nobody ever called us.
I, I don't, I don't, I only know your name. I'm sorry, but.
Okay, we'll let you guys.
Call, call my office.
Are there any more questions?
I have a question. Notice that you put out the windows pools were built and went from seven to fourteen. Isn't there something more recent, so that we're gonna have a sticker shot?
Uh, not that I, the people that I call. They just literally, I said I'm giving a presentation, but I can get, I can get them now.
Most recent one I can think of might be, might be Globe Miami.
Okay.
Probably.
See, and a lot of them are doing.
Maybe more to four to five years old.
Aquatic centers, you know? And we, we don't have the money to do an aquatic center. That's why these, I said, you know, we want a lap school, we want a play area for young adults, and then a play area for kids. So I think that's probably what they, I mean, what Goodyear has done, and what Mesa has done, and what Phoenix have done with their, even what Flagstaff has done. I mean, they're huge. And that's way beyond what we did. But the gentleman that I spoke to who's interested, and what he does is, actually Josh and I both spoke to him, he's doing work in Page now. And he's very interested in the pool, and he's also interested in pursuing some other things that Page is doing. So, I called him up. And he's the one that said, if you're gonna bond, bond for fifteen. If we spend ten, we spend ten. Because, he said, you can figure about thirty percent plus doing business in Page. That's how much higher it is.
Well, and just going, going back, you know, Councilman Farrell and I, when we, and working with Dr. Anderson, when we first tried to take this on again, it was kind of a last-ditch effort for the community that we've all heard, we need a pool, we need a pool. My wife being one of them, I've got little kids, and all the Page moms go to Canav. They're spending thousands of dollars in Canav for swim lessons, you know, and everyone says, oh, we got Lake Powell. Doesn't work with moms and three little kids under ten.
Right.
Lake Powell doesn't work. You know, they can't watch all the kids, and you help watch them kids. They can't teach them in, in a lake, you know? So, this was kind of a last-ditch effort to see what we could do with the, if the district's pool would work. And if it doesn't, and something like this works, that's great. And I agree with Dr. Anderson, we have to start somewhere.
Yep.
I've heard for eleven years, to your comment, yeah, we're gonna get a pool, okay, we're gonna get a splash pad. We still don't have it.
We're, we're.
So, yeah, and I, and I know we're.
Yeah, I know we're on, we're working towards that, but I'm just saying,
you know, we keep having this same, this same conversation, like Mayor was saying, and, and I think if we don't, we're gonna get strung up.
Right.
We have to have something for these kids to do, for the parents to be able to do, something that drives the community. And, I mean, this is a great, great idea. Thank you for the presentation.
And it doesn't have everything, you know? People are gonna complain that, I wish they would've done this. Oh, you know, why don't they do this? You know, they, there's a lot of work that goes into just getting to this point. And Page is seventy-five hundred people. You know, we, we don't have the income of all the flag staff or even a press guy. And then, you know, we, we, we gotta live within our means. And this is, I think, an option that will make most people happy.
Would you repeat your, your, your phrase that you said at the outset?
At the beginning?
About perfect.
About which?
About perfect.
About, uh, yeah, we're, we're not gonna let, uh, perfect be the enemy of the good.
Exactly.
In other words, I, I've seen, I've, I've heard quite a few concepts of how the school can use a facility. I asked for this meeting so we could move beyond this point and, and know where we're going. It sounds to me, you know, not asking for a vote or anything, that there is a consensus that it's a city-owned facility. That we need as many needs of the community as possible within a ten to fifteen million dollar kinda, that's what it might look like, facility. That being said, I would prefer not to make an omelet in public here, and leave it to Superintendent Anderson to figure out what the school's needs are, and communicate them effectively as this IGA is, is developed, and for us to begin a request for proposals to start some construction.
And, you know, I don't think the school has always worked the best with the city. But I can tell you, Dr. Anderson and I have a, a really good, I even bugged him on his spring break. So we have a really, really good working relationship. And I, I know that he'll take the advice of the board, I'll take the advice of the council. And we'll make an IGA that works for everybody. If we're gonna do red inked edits, we'll do red inked edits, till we get, get what you guys want. It's, we're, we're, our intention is not to hoard this thing, we want people to use it.
Well, I wanted, I wanna make sure I thank the school board, specifically Bryce, really appreciate you helping, having those conversations, Mike and others. And I agree with the mayor, we gotta put that one thing to bed. And I consider it to bed now, for the safety of the, you know, for the kids. And I appreciate the work you're doing on this and working, and it's important, and the, the dollars, how to, how to fund it.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna be leveraging, it has to be full, I want full year. That's what I'm looking for, because as a.
No, if I show we've not afforded, you're okay?
I'm okay, but I'm also okay if we are looking at, as, as Bryce said, but we're looking at different options to cover the pool.
Sure.
And we, we get current.
And I have already discussed that, that'll be in the plans.
Good. And I appreciate that, because we're gonna have to go back. If we're saying to the public that their, you know, their, their meal that they just ate at a restaurant is now two percent higher.
No, no, it's not gonna affect.
No, no, I want affection.
Nope, only seeing people in a hotel.
Okay, okay, good.
So that's, that's the best thing, it doesn't, you guys get the advantage of having visitors.
So, I appreciate, I appreciate the work you do for this.
Thanks, thanks.
Well, I just asked everyone to start funding ahead and get a piggy bank ready for graduation when you have kids, families that are visiting from out of town, right?
All right, any more questions? Okay, um, so Page United School District has nothing further on the agenda for this work study and discussion, but the City of Page has noted the option to take possible action posted on their agenda. I'm gonna turn the time over to you, Mr. Dyak, so you can finish your.
Because I, I don't think we're ready to take a vote for actions.
Just your ration.
Just ask staff and to continue working with the school on bringing us to next steps of looking at an IGA and stuff like that, bring it back to council and to their boards, so we can continue the process and keep it all moving.
Sure.
All right, thank you everybody for being here today. We're gonna officially adjourn at six sixteen with our adjourned study session. And then we're gonna take a five-minute break till we can figure out for Page United School District special meeting and also another regular work study session. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
So, Baron?
Yes?
I want information, and if that holds too.
Sure.
Every time I ask them, or.